That your, uh, you the official bulk of office.
I have yours in the folder. I have a folder.
Is that the, the one that we took up there in the courthouse?
For, yeah, I never got it back. I gave it to them when I took it and signed off on it.
Yeah.
The, uh, Judge Culver took it. They didn't give it back? Did he give it back to me?
No, I had to go get mine too, so, but they asked me if I had to like get mine.
So, anyway though, uh, Shannon, I got hers and.
I'm sorry, I would've, should've had it before, but I forgot until I stopped browsing.
Forget it.
Yeah.
Couldn't I get that to you?
You had to ask me.
Denver.
Uh, you, you may have, you wrote this, right?
I, I have a folder. I, I remember Maurice being in there.
Maurice is just in there?
Yeah, I, I, Frank might be, I can't.
Well, anyway though, if you didn't get one back, we need a copy of it.
Remember, we know.
Now then, the requirements of the training, uh, you done yours, Maurice has done his.
I, I have not. I've emailed them three or four different times, and I don't ever get any emails back from them. On, on the, the site that it says to go to, and if you have any questions, to email these people. So, I email them and I never, so I need help finding the site that I went to online. If you can get your own.
Run that, know where everything is.
Well, I saw it, I had, I think that's her phone number, the lady who was doing it. Was it email?
Yeah.
And a phone number.
Yeah, cause it's two, because it's two sites, I don't know if you copy it wrong, one will never get to where you got it.
You do something, I don't even know how to do.
Both of them are southern state, cause ones have Canada.
Okay, uh, well, anyway though, we need to get them called up with the camp and, uh.
You can go.
Uh. First order of agenda, we've had a chance to look at the agenda. If so, do I hear a motion to accept?
I make motion to accept the agenda. I said.
All forms. Alright, now then, a minute for the previous meeting. Approved. Grant.
Second.
All forms. Uh, budget report.
Did we? Did we check on the, uh, thousand dollars to elected officials we talked about? You said you had to check on it?
Uh, no, I didn't tell me something about it.
You want to show them the thousand dollars to our recorder, treasurer, Trent?
Treasurer.
And you said you were gonna check on it, so you didn't know what it was, you didn't know what it was?
She's my next answer, yeah.
I would talk about that, but we, like, cause I get two hundred fifty dollars a month. And that, that, there's no expenses, a flat thing, it's flat salary, two hundred fifty dollars a month.
Then why are we doing all paperwork is all I'm asking. I mean, that's what I asked last month and nobody knew, so we, we was gonna check on it to see why we showed a thousand dollars on paperwork. Here, here.
Uh, not on paperwork. Uh.
I thought it was, cause it was listed like salary, slant.
Contract services, elected official expenses, when I asked you about it, you said you had to check on it, cause you and Miss Roden even one knew what it was for.
Uh.
You said, you said it was a mistake, what you said last month.
Where is, uh, is that same general fund, right?
This is on the, uh, Water Works.
Water Works, Crop and Moss Budget, where's that from, Law Water Works? What if it's just a thousand dollars?
It was for four months, I'm pretty sure, four month salary.
Four months.
For me.
Yeah, that'd be, two hundred fifty, she gets two hundred fifty dollars a month with four months, would be a lot.
Okay.
And it's listed in, as I, I mean, these, these.
Well, I just, I didn't know.
The choices are already in the computer, what you, you know.
Right, well, the only, the only issue I had when I asked last month, nobody knew what it was for.
I, I thought we'd come up with that, but I do, I get, I give a flat salary, I don't have any expense count, I have a flat salary, two hundred fifty dollars a month.
You don't have an expense count?
I don't have an expense count.
Okay, any other questions about the budget or four?
That's all I got, man.
Alright, here are most.
There is some, over here on the general fund, there's, there's like three office expenses. There's, there's two office expenses and then the office supply and then postage.
At the general fund.
Miss Lawrence's expense was laid on vehicles and fence.
Right here, and. There's not something, page four.
Page four? On what page are you on?
Page four, page four.
Page four.
May I, may I ask a question?
Okay.
Uh, may I ask a question, uh?
Yeah.
Uh, not last meeting, but the meeting before that, a couple of questions, different ideas, things on the budget. And, uh, I was, I was under impression, we supposed, the, the mayor and I think Ross was having a meeting together to tell how we could detail this, so that when we came to the meeting, we could answer these questions.
Where are their three spots for office expenses?
No, no, I was just saying, I, I was under impression, maybe I was wrong.
That was for, they'll explain it to me.
Oh, but I thought it was, I mean, this was just, I said, I had the wrong, I thought it was supposed to bring something to us, so we could have a designated way, so that when the mayor presents things, we could have it. So that if there was any question with our map, could be there, and that's what I thought, everybody was gonna get together, so that we could do that.
You talking about on Jay Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, office supply, is it just paper pencils, whatever?
Yeah, but there's two office expenses, why aren't there two sections for it?
Well.
But that's again my question.
The second office expense is a sub, actually a office expense. Uh. Is that an office expense, is that a total, no? Uh, I don't know, but I'll, I'll kinda do some point on that.
So, again, may I, well, again, I, again, I ask a question, can we get a generalized way that we're gonna do this, so that if we're gonna ask these questions? Because it's like, we ask the question, but nobody comes up with a way that we're gonna do it, so that the questions can be answered, you know? You know what I'm saying, it's like, if, if there's a question every month, then I, I think that there's a procedure that maybe you guys have in mind, that we can do, so we can, you can have the answers that we need, and is there, or is there not? Because sometimes we get tied up on the same thing each month, asking questions, I don't mind asking, but there should be, if we're not, if, if you don't feel that the mayor is answering the way he should be, uh, then maybe we should formulate a, the way we want it done, so that when the question is asked, you can have the answers like that? Cause still, I mean, you know, I mean, I mean, it's like we always ask the same questions every month, this is my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I remember what, I don't remember which one, it may have been two of these, but I had to order, uh, either envelopes or, uh, receipt books from Honeycutt. And, and I'm pretty sure one of those, or maybe two of them, are, is that expense?
Right.
Cause I remember that I ran out of, of receipt books.
Something, so you, should we have a list sheet or something, so we can mark it down, so that, you know, so that, because it's coming from memory, it's kinda hard for somebody to, it's gonna be.
Here's, here's kinda the thing with that. Do we really wanna micromanage it? We gave him a budget to work with then, do we really wanna micromanage it that way? But I've been pretty rough on the man already, but let him manage.
Well, it's fine with me, it's, cause I'm just not, I'm just saying.
I mean, we may have a few questions after all, and, and we may have a few questions like that thousand dollars, they told me work with it, I'm done with that.
Maybe it's fine, yeah.
We gave him, we gave him a budget to work with then.
Yeah, and I don't mind people asking.
When he steps out of that budget, then we'll figure out what's going on.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't mind people asking questions, but I think it kinda touches the mayor off guard when he asks a question indirectly, then he has to go from memory where it is, whereas, uh, if there's a procedure where he outlines and he says, oh, yeah, okay, over here what we did, and that's, but, and if we come up with something like that, you know?
What catches me off guard is like this, uh, office supply, about their three hundred nine dollar point of sale, that's not just one item.
Right.
So, I mean, it's.
And not probably not in one place, it may be ten different places.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly right, that's exactly, and I, I mean, I try, don't even try to keep up with every dollar, as long as it balances out, and, and I know in my own heart that he's been there correctly, I'm fine.
From these, I like to say the receipt books, they, they will speak like that. When I, that I ran out, I don't call, I don't call Dale and say, can I order this, he just knows that I need it, and, and I called Honeycutt and say, you know, fix this for us, and then we go get it.
We're in June, you spent forty-four percent, so that's about right.
Well, yeah, so this, that's not a time yet, and we will, I mean, when we approve this budget, I made a statement then, that this is not gonna be enough money to do a year. We just, we're gonna have to do the best we can, but there will be some needed approbations at the end of the year. That's just like our federal government, you know, they're fighting over, uh, they have to, uh, increase the budget. Uh, mainly, well, we don't go that route, but it's basically the same thing. So, anyway, any more questions about budget or four?
Um, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, cause she didn't get the question answered, what I was saying, I'm not trying to, you know, you know, cause I feel she has the right to answer, I just wanna say that if we're gonna, if we're gonna keep asking, maybe we should, you know, so that you don't get lamb ass with a bunch of questions, that you just wanna answer just like that, so.
Okay. If no other question here, motion to approve?
Uh, if there's no other question, questions, I don't, I want to go back to question areas.
Motion made, second. Who made the motion?
I'm moving motion to approve.
I'll take it.
All forms. Okay. The next thing is, what do we, have we come up with any policy or plan or proposal about cash purchases?
Well, I ain't gonna lie, I wanted, that, that didn't like the way it is, I looked at several different ways, I don't like credit cards either, I don't have a credit card, I don't want a credit card, uh. There's different ways to do it, but it's, it's gonna be, end up being all the same in the end, and if you're happy with the way you're doing it, I'm fine with the way you're doing it.
Well, I know that it's not wise, but I'm hoping that, uh, uh, y'all understand what I'm saying by my credit card. I have tried to get credit cards in the city's name.
It can be done, there's other cities that have them in their name.
Uh, what credit card is, you know?
I do not know, I'll have to research that, I just, I didn't go into detail with the people that I've talked to, that they do it.
But it can be done, I'd rather that, I'm sure I'd rather that, and I'm sure y'all would too, but now, Discovery is the one I use mostly, and I called Discovery and they said no, but I didn't call them, but it, so, uh, uh, but. It's, it's a top sub, so, anyway though, what y'all wanna do is keep on.
I'm, I'm in the motion, we keep doing business as we have.
Yeah, okay.
Seven.
All forms. Alright, okay, that's all I have on agenda, although, there's some things came up after the agenda was produced, do y'all wanna put them off, or?
I got some things I'd like to talk to, go ahead with yourself, I got some things I gotta ask you about too, before we, uh.
Uh, move in. We're hoping to get the little money from this ice storm plan, uh, I don't have a clue how much, uh, I talked to half of the FEMA people already. And got a meeting with one coming up here next week, uh, face-to-face meeting, uh, so, but anyway though, we, we feel, I feel comfortable that we are gonna get some money. Now then, what I would love for y'all to consider, uh, about how to use that money, is, uh, uh. We owe about twelve thousand dollars on the Kubota tractor that we bought, in finance. I would love to go as far as we can on that to pay it off.
How much money you think they're gonna get for it?
I don't know.
Which Kubota, I don't, I haven't.
It's the one we used to brush off on.
Oh, it must have had that, one or something?
No, 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 we, we, we used.
You must keep it put up inside, that ain't open, I've seen it.
Yeah, it stays inside most all time, except in the summer months, and it'll sit outside a little bit of summer months, but it's, it's a new, uh, Kubota that we bought, and, uh. On a more or less a lease purchase, but at the end of the lease, we'll lend a dollar and it's ours.
How old is it, was it your own?
It's.
We're like fifteen more payments, like, I call about later, seven, seven, eight months.
Probably two years old.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh.
You know, when we'll probably receive some money from the, uh, old man.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I was, I was kinda like, question Shannon, and I kinda, kinda know what we got, and then we kinda, you know, budget it before, you know, it's kinda, you're.
Well, have we, have we thought about this stuff back in, I think it was February, like the, uh, gas powered sewer pump that we need, um, the A one, K one generator, is it running now, do we get it found out?
Yeah, that is, this just going out here, we got it repaired.
Two discharge meters?
Uh, that, I have got quotes coming on that, and also two pairs, two sets of scales to weigh our chlorine.
Marine scales?
Yeah, I've got, uh, I should next week, so get.
What are we gonna do with this pump that we have down here, it's got a pump three thousand feet, or whatever it was, it was.
Oh.
The crazy bins?
I've had some, uh, second thoughts on that problem, um.
There's a lot of stuff that we, we put off in the beginning of the year that we need to go back to say, wait a minute.
Yeah, that, that, uh, that's something that we've got a new one, when we built the sewers, that was part of the sewers. And it, that's the one that is going completely, and, uh. I don't have a problem really with, um, putting it on a back burner, and when the day comes, hope that we can rent one. Uh, those kind of pumps are pretty well available in Dodge, in Texas, and so that may be.
So, it won't shut it down, me?
No, I, and, and I got price, I think one price on the same spec, I think one price was something like a four thousand dollars. Then I got another, or two more prices, that's in sixty-five thousand dollars.
Probably more than what it's gonna be.
Yeah, I think you're right, so, if that's much money, I don't think we're gonna, I think we gambled, and, uh.
Well, you know, with that other thing, I'd like to table, can we actually receive the money from the storm before we decide on.
Yeah, yeah, well, anyway, that's what y'all be thinking about.
Yeah, I was just bringing that back up, some of the things that we put off first.
Right, yeah.
That we pushed to the side, that we didn't be all thinking about, uh, smoking the sewer, we talked about doing it to find our leaks.
Have you read, have we are?
We did vote to do it, we did vote to do it.
Right, yeah, we, we gonna do it, but we waiting, you know, some of this rain gets away, but goes, a lot of water flowing through there makes it harder for you to smoke it.
It's gonna draw the smoke, which everybody wanted.
Right, yeah, we gonna, we gonna have to plug up the line in order to smoke this, back up the line, and if we plug it up, and we got a lot of water coming through there, we may have out the top door.
Whatever day you plug it up, everybody's gonna flush the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, throw a baby wax, all that sort of stuff. But anyhow, though, we, uh, that's our plan, and, and we got set up this week on our, my seven one, on our high tide. Which is another agent system on our sewer pump. Uh, he and I both can look at our phones and see how the thing's doing, and then if something happens, if one pump goes down, or it overrolls, or then we get a, a notice that you got a problem, or, you're like the well. Uh, we've got a notification system on the well, that notifies us if the power failures or fails, or whatever might happen, so.
How much does that take, expense wise?
Uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
A year?
For the, uh, uh, Verizon service.
Oh.
And, uh, but now, the, the high tide itself was paid for with this pump control. Well, it was around five thousand dollars or something like that, so, uh, but, anyway though, that'll let us know when, uh. Little advanced notice before the John D. folks.
They'll know it before you know it at your house, that little water person, what's going on? Or, something like right here, doesn't know it become, before it becomes a problem for everybody else, they'll be able to handle it.
Yeah, so, well, anyway though, that's, uh, uh, that's something to be thinking about, so far as the, uh, money from the ice storm plan is concerned. And, um, FEMA's gonna pay so much, hopefully, and the state's gonna pay so much, hopefully, so, uh, but, when you deal with, does that relieve? Where do you get the check, and you read the numbers on it, that's when you know what you're gonna get, so, uh, but, uh.
Cause that, that expense has already been taken care of by the general fund, or?
No, 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 this is, uh, well, okay, well, yeah, I think I understand what you're saying now, yeah, our regular budget is already paid for the actual labor out here, yeah.
But she's just gonna be reimbursed, if we can, where we need to.
Yeah, but I would, uh, uh, Kubota is caught charging us some pretty good sum of interest, and, uh, I'd love to get that thing paid off with that, so, uh.
You said it was eight hundred dollars a month?
It's a ninety-five, strange.
That's eight hundred dollars a month.
Eight hundred dollars a month, it's worth a lot.
You're obvious, you told me we have fifteen more plates.
Worth a lot, but it's pretty hard, so, uh, uh, so, anyway though, you said you had something else, uh.
About, that was it, it was the, uh.
All back, back order?
Yes.
Questions? Is that all we've got, uh, just that one big pump?
The, uh, the gas powered sewer pump, we, uh, we looked at, do that, we never did do anything on it, I don't think.
Yeah, that, that's the one we, we just talking about, I thought.
There's some kind of injector or two bottle scales.
Okay, that's what I just mentioned.
I thought we, uh, we approved that last month.
The bottle scales?
Not the scales, I don't think, I think it was the injector and.
No, we did, um, uh, vote for the discharge meter, and we, was, it was there from S N S Plumbin.
Okay, and, and the paperwork was denied because it didn't show the taxes on the damn pump, so, uh, that, date wise, I had to get the new one, and they gonna sell us a new one, so, uh, uh.
See that transfer pump in January, we tabled it in January, but it said a cost of six thousand, and in February, it was back on there, and we tabled it, and its cost was three thousand on, for February.
No, that's, I don't think that's a transfer pump, that's just a regular pump, baby.
The sewer discharge meter was fifty-one seventy-five.
But that, that four inch diesel transfer pump.
And that was in February.
January and February, if it's the same pump.
The four inch transfer pump was tabled.
Yeah, that part I'm, part I know is still tabled, and we need to bring it back up for, uh, the, the, we called West Central, wide, figure.
That's, that's the one that had, yeah, thirty-one hundred on one, and sixty-five thousand on the other. And we need to get, we need to get our quotes right on it.
The transfer pump, it costed six thousand, really had the one quote, you know, it was tabled in January, and then in February, it. The, the sewage transfer pump, thirty-one.
And it was tabled then because of the.
That, that's a two inch, nothing you're saying, Shannon?
On February?
No, it's a four inch.
Four inch, okay, okay, yeah, we never did approve that, we called West, too many, too much wide, yeah, for fifty.
I can tell you, if it's got a pump three thousand foot, and what'd you say, a hundred fifty head, hundred fifty foot ahead, there's, there's no way it's thirty-one hundred dollars.
No, no.
That won't even touch it.
No. It's, it's gonna probably run around sixty-five thousand, and at that price, yes, we'll just hope to press and rent one, one occasion.
If we needed one, we'd rent it.
Yeah. I mean, they, they don't, they don't rent that high price, but, but, uh. Having a sixty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, if you don't use it once every three or four years, it's not wide, I think.
Not at all. And, and when we use it every three or four years, how long do we use it for?
Couple hours sometime, maybe, maybe a day, maybe a.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to maintain it?
For three years, yeah, and you guys be the whip, it's not run for three years, it's terrible.
It'd be, so, you know, like I know, uh, and, uh, some of it doesn't run, especially gas, if it just sets, next time you need to run it, you don't have to work on it.
No, that's work, that's right, so, so I think we just leave that, go, please, go, or, go, go, go. Alright.
You said leave it, we're not, we're not gonna check on it at all, or?
No, I don't think so, uh, I mean, that would be my recommendation, if, if.
It's not a high necessity, a high priority?
Well, at, at the moment, it's a true high, but, time we go to Texas and get one, we, we can make it that long.
Okay, so I'm, I'm kinda, I'm still kinda lost what we're gonna do then, so, we just take it?
In the gate, if, if not buy one, and in the gate we need one, rent one.
Oh, okay then, okay, I understand, okay, alright.
For a short time, whatever it be, us a couple hours, or couple days, or whatever it might be, and, uh, so, uh.
Sewer pump on Hitty Lane.
Uh, that's been ordered, but, uh, it's, he told me yesterday, it's three or four weeks out.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
This way it's been in now?
Yeah.
Everything I ordered, two months, three months out.
That's right, so, uh, uh, then we bought a, uh. A, a small pump for South Main, uh, that's a little killer pump.
How much is that? What pound is that, Mary, now?
Uh.
About how much is that? You said we bought one, I'm just kidding, man, I wasn't.
Less than three thousand, I think. Anything else? Grant?
Which one? You said Grant, I was just.
Okay, 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 we on first thing, baby. Alright, there was no counsel that's nothing else, these. Alright, there was no council, that's nothing to ask, these, that was something.
Uh, our Eva meeting, we had to postpone for this week, for next week, we had some scheduling conflicts. So basically, as far as our Eva goes, we're still the same as we were last month, we haven't discussed anything further. Um, I did wanna see if there was any change in the, uh, survey for the, for the, um, pavilion, have we heard anything on that?
Yeah, uh, we've got some stakes in the ground, but I don't agree with the stake.
Okay, who put the stakes there? Who put the stakes there?
Well, that's early in Texas County, he worked with our engineer, Glenn Spears. Uh, as I have said many times before, that property, uh, well, I'll take exactly the words on the description, is twenty, I won't say exactly, cause I'm not exactly, it's twenty or so feet. Nor, the, the beginning point is twenty or so feet northeast of the Balaheela School of Well. Well, back fifty years ago, Frank Palkner and I was working on this thing and, uh, we talked to several, what I call old folks at that time, and nobody had heard of Balaheela School of Well. So where's the well, I mean, Balaheela School period, so where's the well at? So, I mean, they, there's no actual beginning point. So we had to go around a bush and get.
Have to get all the property all the way around it.
The problem, the problem with that is, on that side is in acres. Uh, then on this side is in lots and blocks, now then acres. Uh, I have always considered Jay Smith's fence down here to be on the east side. On the west side, and north and south side where it's lots and blocks, the description of those lots says that portion of lot number so-and-so in block number so-and-so lying outside the church division. So there's no mentions on the surroundings on the other side. So it just went in kinda shot in the dark deal about what was. Now, what I'm saying is, they've been a kind of a question mark in my mind for many years about a certain hundred feet on each side. Well, the engineer, the, the surveyor, he took it that a hundred feet wasn't part of the church division. So he started there and put some stakes toward the west. They look good, but we, we picked up from where he lived and he just measured, he just surveyed what we wanted, not the whole church division. So one of them, Fox and I, went down and we picked up from his stake and made it go out to the western side of it, and it puts us down at two ninety-nine. So that tells me that the hundred feet in question is actually part of the church division.
Put you in the center at two ninety-nine.
Yeah, the word, yeah, so, so anyway, though, uh, it's, we've got some stakes in the ground and, uh, we, we still stretch our hair about it, but we're pretty sure that we're gonna go with what we got. I mean, we all, by using the stakes in the ground, we can get up inside to that area deep enough that if we're not right, we won't be hurt. So, but I think that, uh, I think we're good shape.
So we, we can proceed with planning our groundbreaking?
Yeah. So, uh.
It seem like you'd be able to go to court, I'll find out who's paying taxes on wood. Is there a spot of land that nobody's paying taxes on? Ooh, boy, doesn't make it sound like that.
See, Rob.
Now, suddenly, can we, millions of dollars of back taxes on that thing?
No, so, see, this area that we're talking about, uh, you go back and pull the records on it, and back in eighteen eighty-three or eighty-six, I forget what it was. Uh, when the city of Emmett was laid out streetwise, the railroad did it. And as they did all the little towns, up and down the railroad. Uh, when the railroad started laying out the Emmett as we know it today, this group of residents got their lip all pushed out about y'all are gonna take our town. So they go to court and they win their cakes. And they set aside, and I think the whole thing is ten acres. Uh, they set aside this, this, this area of land and they blocked it off in, in lots. Uh, on the south side, there's a sixty foot strip to go across there. On the north side, and not in the center, there's a sixty foot street goes through there. On the, the north of that, there's three big lots, which encompasses about half of that ten acres. On the other side of that middle street, there's seven little lots, seventy-five feet wide. Between each of them, there's a twenty foot, twenty, twenty-six point three quarter of a foot street between each of those lots. Each of those lots was allocated to, one of them was for the Balaheela School. The other six is for different churches. Well, back when we started this, we, uh, employed Barry Barber to, uh, research these four lots that we was interested in. And he contacted the churches that could be contacted and got released and give it to the city. Uh, the other churches that don't exist, uh, the court awarded them to the city. So we've got four lots, four of them seventy-five hundred, seventy-five by three hundred foot lots. And, and then no mention in the court record about the streets between them, but you would, you would have to say that the streets between them would be part of the city's property already. So, so therefore, we've got four lots plus the streets, plus the, uh, sixty foot main street. Know what, we got a pretty good side of plot of land out there. And, and I'm gonna go ahead and, and I'm gonna talk to the surveyor, let me get it, before, excuse me, before we set anything down in stone, but I think we're gonna move it to the east that hundred feet. That'll put it right up against Jay Smith's fence and, uh, and that four, we can, we can go far. So, now then.
And it'd be all the way up near the center of two ninety-nine?
No, no, it, the bathroom down here don't even come into it. Uh, it's, it's way down in there where the south side of that first street is. Now then, here, third of part of this year, well, I started on it year before last, too. There's another little area out here where these pine trees are. And, um, Frank Palkner planted a lot of pine trees and, um, I've been wondering about that piece of property for a long time. And, uh, we finally found out that taxes hadn't been paid on it since sixty-five. So, uh, so anyway, though, the state gave it to us.
The evening table is?
Uh.
So it is the city of it?
That's the ball of the city now, so, uh, so anyway, though, they's I didn't sure, just a whole lot goes wrong behind this thing.
So the bathroom, it does belong to the city? Don't know?
It's.
Don't know?
It's not on the parcels that we have surveyed out there. But it's on land that nobody owns, who's, well.
How long we been maintaining it?
About fifty years.
No, no, twenty.
How old are ours, Brian? Thirty years old?
So, I grew up there. I always grew up, if you, if you took care of something for seven years. If you took care of a piece of property for seven years, it became yours. I don't know if it's any truth to any of that or how that works.
Well, but, listen, I told the state, and I had actual dates at that time, but I told the state that we'd been maintaining it for a long time and using it as a park, fine. And, uh, so, so anyway, though, uh, we've got the pine trees, I don't know how big that is, it's not a square, it's a.
Big, it's a.
Yeah, so, uh, so.
Well, it's all ours from the city park until somebody gets hurt in that little section, don't blow it.
I don't know.
Our little school, who you get in contact about that?
Uh, okay, now I called Joanne about this and, and, uh, I wanted to give her an opportunity to kinda make suggestions, but we pretty well got our plan about how we're gonna lay out the park, but I just wanna know what y'all thought about. There's been some mention about a stage, um, I don't wanna put the pavilion out in the middle of the area, block off all the parking, but, uh, we've got a pretty good chunk of land on the west side of the, the little walk trail down there, so I don't know whether we'd be wise to move the pavilion over there or not. Uh, if you think about farmer's market, it may be, then again, it may not be. But we do wanna face it, uh, running east and west, so, uh, and that way the vehicles can drift back into the north and south sides of, of the pavilion and, uh, I don't know, there's problems, so, so big, so. So anyway, though, you have anything else? Okay, well, anyway, though, we can go ahead and, I'd love to meet with at least Joanne and talk about pro and con. And, uh, but then after that, then, uh, go ahead and. I talked to Daniel Spears with a engineering firm and they don't do, uh, architectural designs, they've got another firm that's doing that part. And, uh, so anyhow, though, they've not sent anything back to Spears yet, so hopefully soon. At the end of April, then we can, can, uh, start next phase, another, so. What else? Brian, do you have anything?
I'm getting, yeah, we do, we got a CPR class next week.
Is it next week?
Next Thursday, next Thursday.
Is it next Thursday?
Well, I think, yeah. I, I had, I had that date nailed down with her.
Okay, so hang on, our chief had got that maybe.
Well, the, we're, we're in apartment will be having a CPR class that will be open to whoever wants to come take it. They just need, when I get the date and time set, I can get it out there and whoever, whoever wants to come take it, it's five dollars a head. Uh, and it's just CPR. Uh, and we'll pass the hat around for tips for the training, what I'm calling it, I mean, give her some money for doing it.
Is that CPR for babies too?
Uh, as far as I know, it'll be every, you know, PDN adults, and I mean, all I need to know is, is to get a head count back to me. That way I can tell her how many dummies she brought in.
When is it then?
Hopefully, tentatively, it's gonna be a week from tonight at six P M.
We're sure. Yeah, you get that day, I'd like to know.
I'll, I'll get it to Dale and if, if everybody's got that notification or whatever.
Call on it, oh, yeah.
Uh, I was in Kail last night taking pictures for ID cards and there was, uh, a couple down there that said they certainly wanted it.
We'll, we'll get it out, I'll get the information to you and you can put it out on the.
They was, they was really interested in first for fun. Have we got anything?
Uh, that's not anything I've looked into or, or thought about.
Okay.
Uh.
Well, now, what if one goes to school to teach?
He can do, uh.
He, he can't do medical.
No.
He can do mighty anything else, but not medical.
Well, what would you send him to school? With fire training, heat training, fire training.
And, and that's a big benefit to the fire department. I mean, cause every year we have to have sixteen hour training per member.
And now you do it here instead of driving them.
We don't have to be at the mercy of Farid Hills, Ralston, Langburg, we can do it right here and we can get our training and we can invite other departments if they want to come get their training, come get it.
Right, now, uh, Farid Hills is the only one that's got a certified instructor, is that right?
Yellow papers and not only others.
Yellow papers, yeah, that's Farid Hills. Yeah, that's Farid Hills.
How tall do you like?
Yeah, got on nineteen north out of Prescott.
Okay.
Well, but he, he's the only one in the Bay town.
Yeah.
Uh.
Joey, Joey was, was the only one, now we have one now.
I saw, uh, this, uh, Gomerson Nutt?
Yeah, he, he is, isn't he?
Well, he's been pretty quiet, I mean, I hadn't heard anything out of him.
Oh, he's been in my, he's, he's moved into my office.
He is? Well, uh, see, in the, in the past, what we've run into is, I'll find out tonight from you that the Ralston is having a training class. That's a lot of good to me, you know, when we're in our department.
Right.
And, you know, and this happened like that quite often where, oh, yeah, they had a training class last weekend. Nobody knew about it.
Well, the, the, right now, other than Joey and Juan, and, uh, and John, I think Gomerson is an instructor, I've forgotten about him, but I'm.
Gomerson's name put on the class.
Huh?
Gomerson's name put on the class.
He had, no, I don't think he has, at least, I don't think he's qualified.
He's been pretty quiet.
But, but anyway, though, other than that, you'd have to get an instructor from Camden to come up here and that's just like pull a hand stick.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh.
And then they wanna do it at most inconvenient time for everybody.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, so, so that, that, uh, getting one certified to be able to, uh, handle that force was a great asset to the fire department.
You said, you said you was gonna get one that, that website or?
Dale, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing.
Okay.
Um, we would like to thank the fire department, they have graciously agreed to help again this year raise money for the Fourth of July. They have set a, um, hamburger hot dog supper for Saturday, June the tenth, beginning at four P M. On a donation wise, donation wise, um, to the fire department and those proceeds will come, um, together with the Eva proceeds to help put on the, uh, July celebration, uh, like we did last year. Um, we're planning on trying to have again the fireworks, a band, um, we're looking at face painting, uh, we're looking at a trick horse, um, act. Uh, we're looking at bounce houses, um, we're planning on also, this year, instead of honoring our veterans, we're gonna honor, um, service members, like EMS, firefighters, things like that. So we will honor those members who are present with a penny. Uh, we're also planning on the, um, children's parade leaving the First Baptist Church. They can decorate bicycles, uh, wagons, four wheelers, you know, anything that they wanna decorate and be a part of that children's parade as they were last year, the kids really seem to enjoy that. So if you guys would help us spread the word on that, um, that coop out.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that shouldn't. That's gonna be the trick, trick horse show.
Yeah, the trick horse will be trying to catch that.
Sitting around here riding, whatever we get. I thought y'all had him here in the February, he's either the cage.
We did, he's been down though.
We may have put in a pony ordinance.
We don't get out and we add, we just get that like a night.
And you, you have anything?
Thank you for fixing the potholes. I don't get in trouble now for hitting him, because now he doesn't know that I hit him.
Well, it's moving out though. Well, it's moving now, so. I told you. Something like you called me and heard before. I think I've been a bad pothole.
It was bad.
It's, it's, you know, you spend money on a vehicle and you just, you hit the pothole and you see it there, it's been there two weeks, how do you not see it? But you better say nothing about it, we hit it. That's what caused the divorce, it wasn't a pothole, it wasn't a vehicle, it was me saying something.
Okay, well, next month's agenda also, we'll uh, kinda uh get into this uh pavilion business. And uh, we'll need to set up some rules and regulations. Uh, so far as the administrators concerned, so you know, we afford an administrator to handle that, so we need to, uh. Open up and establish some.
Usage, usage rules and laws and.
Well, yeah, pay.
Fees or equipment.
So uh, so anyway, though. I mean. They, they'd have paid that sit out in that, in Grant, in other words, so we just have to approve that for our rule. So uh. Alright. If nothing else, I'm making a motion with you, sound like a winner to me.